Towards consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card, noting the number of agenda item about which you wish to speak and present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one item, please fill out a separate card for each of them. If you wish to speak under a public comment, please note that on the speaker card. When the matter is announced, please approach a speaker's lectern after being recognized by the chair. Is there any public comment?
Would you like to call the role first before?
Oh, alright. Role call, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Present.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Stevens?
Here.
Alright, is Daniel Garza here today? Perfect. Alright, so we're gonna start off with, um, he'll be leading us with the invocation today. And if I could ask Stee- let's see here, Steve Smith, if you could please lead us with the pledge allegiance after he's done.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet today and to conduct the business of the day. Lord, I would like to ask for a special prayer of blessing for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors as they conduct their meeting today. I pray for a blessing on their discussions, on the motions brought before the floor, on whatever items may be voted on. Lord, I also pray for a special blessing over each board member and their families, and every faithful servant, and their households that are represented here today. We pray that your angels and your Holy Spirit would guide these meetings. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Yeah, alright, you guys want to join me down?
Will Wanda Short please join the board up front for a presentation of a gold resolution in honor of your retirement from Sutter County?
Okay, Wanda Short, Public Guardian, Sutter County Board of Supervisors, takes this opportunity to present Wanda Short with a gold resolution and recognition of 32 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Sutter and Yuba Counties. Wow, alright, deserves an applause. During her 32-year tenure, Mrs. Short has provided compassionate, dedicated support to the community members she has served while displaying commitment, empathy, and a true desire to promote health and wellness for those she is caring for. Ms. Short is recognized as a person-centered and valued leader of the Public Guardian program. Her dedication to the clients and families in Sutter and Yuba areas have greatly impacted those she serves and the overall community. Ms. Short has served Sutter County with her whole heart and is deeply dedicated to her field, going above and beyond to care for others. She is an exceptional and trusted advocate for those who are served by the Public Guardian. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations and sincere appreciation to Wanda Short on the occasion of her retirement of 32 years of service to Sutter County. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
I would just like to say thank you. I'm very humbled and proud to have served this community for 32 years. And every day felt like I made a difference in our community to help others have a little bit better life.
Thank you for your service. I'm gonna pass this to Sarah Eberhart-Rios.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Eberhart-Rios. I'm your Health and Human Services Director, and I just really want to take this moment to thank Wanda. Wanda is so very talented and very special. And she has, as I wrote in the proclamation language, "served this county with her whole heart." And I think the highest compliment that I could give is that if someone needed to be conserved, I would definitely trust Wanda with my family member. And so, really appreciate you, Wanda. Rick, anything you'd like to share?
The only thing I would say is I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said. And I've known Wanda for, I've worked here 25 years, I've known her for 25 years. And she's, again, you know, regardless of the capacity that she's worked in, whether it's been Public Guardian or Case Management Supervisor, wherever she's been, she has shown that same dedication and compassion for our clients. And so, thank you.
Will Sheriff Barnes and Sutter County Dispatchers please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as Dispatch Appreciation Week?
Alright, Dispatch Appreciation Week. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, deputies, firefighters, and paramedics is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of law enforcement deputies, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by the citizens who call the Sutter County Dispatch Center. 911 first responders are the single vital link for law enforcement deputies, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. 911 first responders of Sutter County Dispatch Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as Dispatcher Appreciation Week in Sutter County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the county and citizens safe.
So, I just wanted to, you know, thank our dispatchers. Two are here, some are at work, the rest are probably sleeping, because again, we provide 24-hour services. You know, I always say that if you're good at multitasking, forget everything you know, because dispatching is really multitasking on a very different level. It's a very tough job. A lot of times, they're the calming voice during people's, you know, most dire emergency when they call. And they're really the ones, for a lot of us, that really get the ball rolling and are the catalyst for everything that we do. And then not only on the law enforcement side, but the fire side as well. So, they just, they're our eyes and ears. They take care of all of us, they take care of the community, and we'd be lost without them. So, I just want to say thank you.
Will Stacy Lee with Health and Human Services please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 29th, 2025, as Fentanyl Awareness Day?
Alright, Fentanyl Awareness Day. Fentanyl poisoning is epidemic that is devastating communities and families across the state of California. Fentanyl is a scheduled to controlled substance and synthetic opioid drug that is approximately 100 times more potent than morphine and 50 times more potent than heroin. Fentanyl is often used as an additive or a substitute to other drugs unknowingly by users, increasing the risk of fatal overdose. And awareness is one of the most greatest tools to fight the opioid public health crisis. Illicit fentanyl is the leading cause of drug overdose deaths, along or almost all of which is being illegally smuggled into the United States. By uniting as a community to address this epidemic, we can extend vital support to those affected by addiction and work collaboratively towards solutions that save lives and heal our community. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim by resolution and recognize April 29th, 2025, as National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And we call this observation to the attention of all of our citizens.
Thank you, members of the Board of Supervisor for this honor. We are truly grateful for this recognition. This proclamation reflects the dedication and hard work of many individuals, and it is a privilege to be a part of this community. I would like to thank the colleagues and supporters to help make this possible. We are dedicated and committed to continue serving this community and making a positive impact.
Will Chief Epperson and Sutter County Firefighters please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters' Day?
Alright, International Firefighters' Day. Firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property. And sometimes that dedication comes in the form of countless hours, volunteered over many years, and others, it's the many selfless years working in the industry. And in all cases, it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. International Firefighters' Day is a time where the community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environment are as safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions. International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on the 4th of May, where we remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community, or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all, and show our support and appreciation to the firefighters worldwide who continue to support us so well throughout the year. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim May 4th as International Firefighters' Day in Sutter County. We thank all firefighters for their selfless service and encourage the residents of Sutter County to observe the day of May 4th in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts to our fire and emergency services personnel.
I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this. I've had the pleasure of being the leader of these guys for the next, or for the last year, and I've seen so much growth in them this year, so I'll just give them another round of applause.
Will Captain Maples and Sutter County Correctional Officers please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week?
Alright, National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. Correctional officers are skilled law enforcement professionals who serve 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to safely, securely, and humanely house inmates within the county, often in face of violence and danger. They are brave, courageous, and tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe and provide a multitude of services to the county's offenders. They have a tremendous responsibility and are owed our gratitude. They are responsible for supervising inmate conduct and behavior to maintain security within the facility while promoting positive behavior, attitudes, and skills within the inmate population in order to reduce recidivism and promote successful reentry into the community. National Correctional Officers and Employees Week raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by correctional officers and correctional personnel. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week, and recognizes the outstanding service that these men and women provide to the county. Thank you for your services.
I want to thank the Board of Supervisors. And one thing I do want to say is, you know, I've only been their captain for a short amount of time, but I can tell you that the men and women that work in the jail are some of the best people that we could have working for the citizens of Sutter County and for the Sheriff's Office. They work hard, they do a great job, and they don't just care about getting a paycheck, they care about everybody, including the inmates, the person, people in custody, and the welfare of everybody that's within the jail. And, you know, I couldn't do my job without them. The lieutenant couldn't do his job without them either. And everybody in here should be proud that we have good men and women working in our custodial environment.
I'll be brief. You know, I always say that sometimes jail's not a bad place to be, right? And it's all about care and custody. And Matt kind of emphasized that care component of it. We have so many rehabilitative programs, vocational training, educational programs, faith-based services. So, you can really come in, and our staff work with people to make them better as they go back out into the community. We don't do it alone. HHS is a great partner, probation, and so many others. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody, but also recognize all our amazing staff, as Matt said. So, thank you.
Will Jamie Dickerson with Yuba-Sutter Chamber of Commerce please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week?
National Small Business Week, May 4th through 10th, 2025. National Small Business Week is a time to recognize and celebrate the vital role that small businesses play in our local economy, fostering innovation, creating jobs, and contributing to the vibrant fabric of our community. Small businesses in Sutter County are the backbone of our local economy, driving economic growth, supporting families, and enriching the quality of life for all residents. It is important to recognize the hard work, dedication, and resilience of our small business owners who face challenges and adapt to changing times while creating valuable goods and services for our community. Supporting local small businesses strengthens Sutter County and helps ensure its continued growth and prosperity. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim that May 4th through 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week. We urge all residents to support local small businesses throughout the week and year, and to celebrate the entrepreneurial spirit that makes our community a vibrant and prosperous place to live and work. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the Sutter County Board of Supervisors for this and their partnership and support with the Chamber over the years and future, this being one of them. So, thank you all. Support small businesses, especially this week. Look for exciting things ahead.
Will Rhonda Dorsey with Sutter County Health and Human Services please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 6th through the 12th, 2025, as National Nurses Week?
Alright, National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th, 2025. The American Nurses Association has declared the week of May 26th through 12th, 2025, as National Nurses Week, and celebrates this year's theme: Care, Lead, Inspire, Repeat, to honor the various roles of nurses, as well as the positive impact nurses have on everyone's lives in Sutter County. The nursing profession is an indispensable Hold on a second. Okay, the nursing profession is an indispensable component in the safety and quality of life for all patients in Sutter County. Greater numbers of quality nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in our community. The cost-effective, safe, and quality healthcare services provided by nurses is and will continue to be an ever-more-important component of the U.S. healthcare delivery system. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Nurses Week, and ask that all residents of Sutter County join in honoring the many nurses who care for all of us in Sutter County. Congratulations.
Hi, good afternoon. I just want to say it's truly an honor and a blessing. Thank you, Board of Supes, for this proclamation and just honoring us nurses. For all the nurses, I want to say at Sutter Yuba Health, inpatient and outpatient, both, we wanted to say thank you, and we truly love our work. We're a very hard-working team. We love, we love our community. And so, everything that we pour into our community is a reflection of the compassion that we have, and we just want to say thank you.
Very briefly, wanted to recognize also Correctional Health, our colleagues at Adventist Health and Write Out, all of the folks that are working in the FQHCs, Public Health. We could go on and on. Nurses, take care of us, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Will Marnie Sanders with Blue Zones please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing May 2025 as National Bike Month?
Alright, National Bike Month, May 2025. May is National Bike Month, and many residents engage in bicycling because it's an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Sutter County's scenic beauty. The 10-mile Yuba City-Sutter Bike Trail attracts cyclists each year and offers a great view of the Sutter Buttes. Creating a cycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life. Bicycling reduces pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. Educating cyclists and motorists about the proper and safe operations of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month. We urge all road users to share their roads safely with bicyclists, and encourage everyone to bike with family and friends, and enjoy the over 108 miles of bikeways that Sutter County has to offer.
What Supervisor Baines said, basically. So, we appreciate the Board of Supervisors recognizing May as Bike Month and recognizing how it contributes to the greater health of our community, and the importance of making a more walkable and bikeable community for all people to be able to move throughout the community in healthy ways. So, we really do appreciate the recognition. And Ben Deal is here with us with the Yuba Area Bike Advocate Group, Yuba-Sutter Area Bike Advocate Group. And if I may just take the opportunity to announce that we are celebrating May as Bike Month on May 23rd. We're celebrating with our baseball team that is here for Yuba and Sutter, the High Wheelers game on May 23rd. We are having a walk and roll to the ballgame event. It's an event where you can bike, walk, if you need to drive, that's good too. But get on out to the ballpark, bring your kids. We have some helmet fitting and free helmets that we're giving away. There's also going to be a raffle for a $500 gift card to Van's Bicycle Shop. And we just want to see people getting out and riding their bikes. And Supervisor Baines mentioned the 108 miles of bike lanes that we have, and we certainly want to help make those lanes safer, and we want people to be biking safely. So, we really do, again, appreciate this recognition of May as Bike Month.
Okay, now coming back to public comment. Is there any, are there any comments from the public?
Yes, we have one. Harleen and Amanda.
Good afternoon, Sutter County Board of Supervisors. My name is Harleen Corr, and I work for the Jacotta Movement, a nonprofit organization statewide. And my position is as a Health and Wellness Fellow, working for supervising our high school interns on a health and wellness internship. And we promote substance use prevention and education on their school campuses and within the community.
Hi, and I'm Amanda Houston, the Executive Director of SALAB, both in Sutter and Yuba County. And our mission is to mobilize people and resources to promote positive impacts and change within our communities. Jacara and SALAB have partnered with California Health Collaborative and their tobacco prevention program called STAND, Small Town Allies Against Nicotine Dependency, which focuses on tobacco prevention in rural areas, like ours. Rural communities face significantly higher rates of tobacco use, with youth often becoming addicted at a younger ages and using tobacco products like chew and vapes at a much higher rates. This contributes to increased chronic disease in areas that already struggle with access to healthcare and sensation resources.
We would like to take a moment to invite our community to not only attend, but to get involved as volunteers for this year's Yuba-Sutter Shines event happening this Saturday, April 26th, from 7:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., starting at Goshay Aquatic Park. Our two groups, along with community volunteers, will pick up tobacco waste in live oak. This event is a platform to bring together neighbors from across our county. We're calling on students, families, service clubs, faith groups, and anyone with the little time and a lot of heart to help us make this day a success. Yuba-Sutter Shines is built by the community, for the community, and we want to ensure our role voices are at the center of it. Volunteering is a great way to give back, meet new people, and show pride in where we come from.
We ask the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to help us spread the word and encourage our residents to participate. We also invite you to join us at the Yuba-Sutter Shines event. This event wouldn't be possible without the heart of our community, our volunteers. Thank you for your time and your continued support of events that strengthen community connection in our amazing county.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to staff, and that require only routine action by the board. The Chair will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the board may, at its option or upon request of members of the public, consider any matter separately. So, we have actually been requested to remove items six, ten, thirteen, and seventeen because they need a four-fifths vote? Is that correct? So, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the other ones besides the one mentioned.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. If there were any roll call, or just a?
Sure. Supervisor Boone?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
And excuse me, Chair, we do have one more public speaker. Tony Farley?
Tony Farley, Walton, Hay Park. Today is Good Day, Firefighters' Day, Dispatchers' Day, Fentanyl Day. I hate that fentanyl, man. That fentanyl is like crack cocaine on steroids. And also, Day is Nursing Day and Sheriff Rios' Day, and thank you for your service, Wanda, the conservator and pub guardian. So, thank her. Hope we hire a new pub guardian. Thank you, Jeff Stevens, Farmhouse, best pumpkin pie ever. Thank you, Carmen Baines, the best Johnny Tucker ever. Thank you, Jeff Boone, the best Boone ever. And thank you, Neil, the cow-trust dog, Neil. Thank you, Zachary Hamble, the serious Hamble ever. Silly fits, opposite silly fits, your tack warning, attack warning. Thank you, Everheart Rios, Sheriff Rios. Thank you, thank you, Stephanie Gina. Thank you, Professor Steve Smith at Harvard Kennedy School, the Harvard Policy School. Thank you, Bill, the future president. Thank you, Colonel, Colonel, thank you, Colonel. The Colonel Raider, the Raider Colonel. Thank you, the baddest police sheriff ever, Bram Barn. Thank you, thank you, young officer, best pitcher, best pitcher ever. Thank you, officer. And thank you, Captain Tava, a new dispatcher. Thank you. And also, thank you to all the county workers, and I hope, hope, pray for Officer Omar Redardi. He died over fentanyl terrorism. Fentanyl killed Officer Redardi. That was sad, I was crying when Steve dropped me at home, I was crying, because the guy was young, the officer was young, so it's depressing. Yeah, bad, bad way, I got assaulted by fentanyl guy. Fentanyl guy saw me, too, so it's hell with me. I got assaulted by fentanyl, the officer died from fentanyl. So, fentanyl kills everybody, it's a killer. So, hope to say prayers for everybody, for Officer Redardi, and pray for first responders, and veterans, and government workers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd also like to note that the Water Works meeting will not be taking place due to the fact that we don't have the entire board. Correct, so we'll move down to item twenty? Here's item?
Presentation of the two thousand twenty-four Sutter County Domestic Violence Council and Child Abuse Prevention Council Annual Report.
Helps if I turn it on. All right, good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Honorable Members of the Board. I'm Josh Thomas, the Branch Director overseeing Children's Services under Health and Human Services for Sutter County. I'm also the Domestic Violence and Child Abuse Prevention Committee Chair for this year, and I'm looking forward to presenting our two thousand twenty-four report. All right, so the Sutter County Domestic Violence Council and Child Abuse Prevention Council, known as DVCAPC, was established by ordinance in March nineteen ninety-five and renamed by ordinance in December two thousand two. It has been assigned the responsibility of reporting annually to the Board of Supervisors the council's efforts of the previous year. The council's goal of reducing all forms of domestic violence and child abuse in Sutter County continues to be the focus of the council's activities through the multidisciplinary collaborative work of the organization. This council monitors response rates to family violence and oversees the Child Abuse Prevention Intervention and Treatment Funds, known as CAPIT, and the Community-Based Child Abuse Prevention Funds, known as CBCAP. Beginning two thousand nine, the California Department of Social Services required that programs funded through CAPIT and BCAP and promoting safe and stable families align with the California Children and Families Services Review to strengthen child abuse prevention efforts and improve outcomes for children and families. It is the council's hope that this report will inform and enlist assistance of others in standing against all forms of family violence. Next slide. So, DVCAPC committee members, it's a multidisciplinary team, as Sheriff Barnes is aware as well. There's a variety of different agencies that are part of the members of the council. And so, some of those include Sutter County Probation Department, Sutter County Victim Services, Casa de Esperanza, our domestic violence shelter, Sutter County Sheriff's Office, who provides us some stats, and then also Yuba City Police Department, who provides stats as well, the Sutter County Health and Human Services, Children's Services Branch, Child Welfare Services, Sutter County Superintendent of Schools, among several others that you see there. The DVCAPC goals. The council adopted comprehensive goals and objectives. For each goal of the council, a committee is established and charged each year for the accomplishment of each of the objectives necessary to complete the goal. In two thousand twenty-four, the goals and corresponding committee of the Domestic Violence Council and Child Abuse Prevention Council were as follows. Number one, organization. Number two, response and statistics. Number three, community education and prevention. So, to expand a bit on number one, organization. In two thousand twenty-four, the Organization Committee continued recruitment efforts to engage community members to become regular members of the council. The committee advertised community member vacancies on social media, Instagram and Facebook, and encouraged other county agencies and stakeholders to share posts on their social media. The DVCAPC council meets every other month. In two thousand twenty-four, the council monitored the membership, facilitated meetings to gather information regarding the reporting of DV-related domestic violence-related statistics in each agency, provided updates from each committee, as well as discussed new programs and services, such as the Lisa Project, that we had opened up for a week in Boyd Hall in two thousand twenty-four, April two thousand twenty-four, and the Handle With Care Project. There was support for the Handle With Care, which is a partnership between Live Oak Unified School District, and then also Sutter County Sheriff. And there was a pilot that had occurred in Live Oak Unified School District with Handle With Care, and then later expanded. It started at Luther Elementary and then expanded to throughout Live Oak Unified School District, and they're also looking at potentially maybe expanding Stepwise and Meridian, maybe AK, so we're looking at kind of growing, growing that service. So, some great work being done there with the Sheriff Department and Live Oak Unified School District out there. Furthermore, the council has supported, the DVCAPC council has supported differential response with Child Welfare Services, known as CPS, Child Welfare Services, Protecting Children, and it's a preventative effort with differential response with their Path One Prevention Services that are provided, and those are provided all throughout Sutter County. In addition, the council has also supported Evidence-Based Parenting Program, The Incredible Years, which is an early intervention prevention parenting program, providing parents with tools and strategies to support their child in wellness and emotional development. Next slide, so number two, expanding on the response and statistics. So, thank you to the Yuba City Police Department for the stats that they provide. So, you'll see here, the blue bar includes domestic violence incidents occurring in their jurisdiction and in their response area within the city. And then you'll see the orange bars, that includes, it's a subset of the blue bars, so that includes the number of incidences where children were in the home and exposed to the domestic violence that was occurring. So, you'll see there's a trend line over the last, you know, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-four, and the trend is going in a downward direction, meaning less incidences were reported. Okay, and the next slide. Thank you to the Sutter County Sheriff for providing their statistics as well, and this graph is set up the same way with the blue bars representing all DV incidences, and then the orange bars representing those that, as a subset of the blue, those that involve children as well. And so, that goes also through two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-four. And as you see, there's, that trend's going in a different direction there. It's going upwards, so there's been an increase. It's been about eighty-some-odd percent of an increase over those several years. And so, it's, can be difficult to figure out causation. Why is there an increase within the county response area of domestic violence? And some of that, you know, anecdotally, talking to the partners on the committee, we know that Live Oak, the Live Oak area has increased a bit in population. We know with Child Welfare Services, over the last couple of years, we've got an increase in Child Protective Services, Child Welfare responses within the Live Oak area. So, I think this graph is likely telling us that there's maybe some more need than generally has happened in the past. My guess would be, talking to our partners, the Live Oak area would be an area of focus. So, that's good information for everybody to know. And so, again, thank you for the services that are being provided within our county and our county partners, again, with Sheriff Barnes and Live Oak Unified School District. I know Superintendent Gil Branson has done a lot with the Handle With Care services that were piloted specifically in Live Oak Unified, and amongst other services such as differential response with Child Welfare Services to focus on prevention. The next slide, oh, sorry, can we go one back? This is Casa de Esperanza. This is, these stats are collected over just a three-year period, and it's notable that there may be duplication with the Casa de Esperanza numbers because they don't have a clear jurisdiction, you know? They may be splashing over into the city population and the county population as well. So, there could be a duplication of incidences that are reported there, but the trend has, it's a little lower, but it's about a thirty percent increase over those three years, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So, next slide, please. And so, this slide with the pie graph, this kind of shows you the overall numbers, and again, so if you're looking at the blue wedge, that's the sheriff report within the county response area, and it's the smallest number, even though the trend had increased, you saw an eighty-six percent increase. The overall number, being that blue wedge, is the smallest number of the reports having been provided. And then you'll see the orange wedge is the Yuba City PD numbers that are reported. They're over this three-year period, and it's about double the amount. Of course, a larger population center. So, the smaller population centers, you know, statistically may have more flux within them as well. And then you'll see the green wedge that represents our domestic violence shelter, Casa de Esperanza, Domestic Violence Services, and again, those could be duplicate numbers. We're not clear on how many are duplicate or not, but sometimes they provide services that have no law enforcement. We wanted to include them because they have, sometimes we'll provide services that have no law enforcement response or partnership at that moment, but are still being sheltered. Maybe the folks don't want to tag in law enforcement at that time, but they're willing to get safe. So, we didn't want to omit those numbers, but again, there could be some duplication between that green, green stats there. Okay, if you can go to the next slide, please, and then this is just a clear shot of kind of the agency overall totals here, showing kind of the incidents per year, and then, sorry, the other slide involving children is in blue here. But as you can see, both the total incidents reported and those involving children have increased over the last three years. The highlights, this highlights the continuing need for community awareness and resources to support affected family members. Right, and then the next slide, this is number three, our community education and prevention. The council's chosen to focus on these five points here for spreading awareness and information and education during this year, and just wanted to thank the board for designating, making the proclamation for April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month earlier this month, and that's our number two that you see there. And so, this is the last slide, wrapping up. In that Spirit of Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, just wanted to mention the pinwheel is the symbol for Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and the idea behind that is the pinwheel represents the whimsical nature of childhood, just by its nature, and then also represents the bright future that we hope for every child and that every child deserves. So, one of the things that folks can do is wear blue, you know, to designate Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Display pinwheels, you'll see on eleven-thirty Civic Center Boulevard in front of Victim Services, Lexi and her crew out there have a single pinwheel out for every forensic interview that they've done, and it's a beautiful representation out there for their efforts. And then you'll see some around town, too. Once you know to look for them, you'll really see them kind of pop out. There's some real large ones, I think, on Queens as well. So, anyhow, but more importantly, with wearing blue and the pinwheels, is to have the conversations in the community with each other, between our organizations. The fact of the matter is that child abuse is preventable. It's not just a bad parent problem. Child abuse is multifaceted, there's a lot of nuance that goes into it, and it is an area where prevention makes a difference. Everything from parenting education to preventative child welfare support with like differential response and supports in those areas. So, that concludes the report for the Domestic Violence and Child Prevention Awareness Committee, and then also preventchildabuse.org if you have any other questions or comments. Feel free to ask.
Yes, sir.
Question, have you looked at the numbers for this area versus other areas? Are we running, would you say, high or low, or is it hard to get a feel for if this area is, you know, better or worse off?
Better or worse off compared, yeah, Supervisor Stevens, I have not done that analysis at this point, but we could get that information to you.
It'd be interesting just to know if we have a higher rate or a lower rate, and maybe how come.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item twenty-one. Our CEO, Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Supervisors. So, a couple things. This week, there's the California State Association of Counties Legislative Conference, so some of us will be in Sacramento for the next couple of days, learning about the hundreds, sometimes thousands of laws the state passes, and what we can do to advocate for our particular areas, so. And then a reminder, next week, next Tuesday on the twenty-ninth, at four p.m. here at this location, there will be our hemp public hearing and discussion of a possible ordinance change, and then at six p.m. we'll have our annual budget study session for discussion on the budget development and get feedback from the public and the board. And this coming Saturday, from twelve to four, at our museum, is the fiftieth anniversary celebration of the museum, and there's a new exhibit on water as well, so that will be exciting. Please attend, there'll be kids, activities, and food trucks, and different things. And then on May thirteenth, after our board meeting at six p.m., there will be a high school speech contest hosted by the board, and a lot of work has been done by emergency management. I'd like to thank Zach and Leigh Anne Hennessy for all their work on that, and they received a donation from the community. a donation from the Community Foundation for scholarships for any Sutter County high school student that wants to enter, and the subject matter will be on emergency management, emergency preparedness, and they will have three minutes as if they're a member of the public just speaking from the floor, and then supervisors and depending who's able to attend, and some other staff from the county and officials from the Community Foundation will be judges on that. So, looking forward to that event, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We've got the correspondence, you've been receiving and filed?
Yes.
Okay. Bring it back to supervisors for reports. Supervisor Boone?
I'd like to say thank you to all the Sutter County employees that we saw here tonight. They do an exceptional job and go out of their way to make us look good, and I'm proud that they're with our team. I really appreciate that. As a team, the teamwork makes the dream work, and I'm a full believer of that. Thank you.
Supervisor Stevens?
Well, first of all, I was very impressed by Carmen Baines reading off all those proclamations. That was a lot, so thank you for doing that. Want to reinfancy, Yuba-Sutter Shines this weekend, Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00. The more the community comes out, the more we get done, and it's really great to see everybody out there participating. And the third thing was, I stopped by, many of you know that on Oswald Road in 99, they're having construction. I stopped by there today and just talked to some of the supervisors, and they were saying that it has gone off without a hitch as far as there's been no incidences or real problems. They're on schedule, so hopefully by the end of July, 99 and Oswald will be up and running with no problems.
All right. I just have one request that I'd like to have a letter of sympathy and condolences go out to the family of Jiginder Singh Baines for his passing. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion for the requests as made.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.